That's week two and eleven. I'm gonna go ahead and officially commence meeting to order tonight. Uh, tonight, uh, I'm gonna do the application tonight. Uh, it's the last meeting of the year and, uh, I think I'm gonna break our calendar tonight. Uh, after that, we're gonna have our pledge of allegiance. Uh, let's break the other three. Father, we thank you for tonight. We, we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be, uh, a part of a great county, uh, Newton County. God, we, we thank you for, uh, just the people that you have in this community, God. We have some wonderful people, uh, in this community. We, we thank you for all, uh, public safety people, God, who keep us safe. We pray for all of your leadership, God. We, we pray for just the, the peace that, that you have in this community, Lord. We, we thank you, Lord, for, uh, just so many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Uh, as we come out, I will ask for you, God, we, we thank you for this leadership, thank you, God.
Thanks, God. We know that this is not an easy job, God, and this, this job is very time consuming. And we thank you for giving, giving them the time and the patience and the understanding, God, to, to do this for, for, for our community, God. And so for that, we, we say, thank you. Uh, Lord, we ask if you would, Lord, to bless, um, this meeting tonight. Uh, bless the, the, the people that's here tonight. Lord, just bless our whole community. Thank you, Lord, for a community that wrapped their arms around the Turner family, God. Uh, in such a mighty way, we, we thank you for that. Um, and, Lord, tonight, we just ask a special prayer. Uh, Lord, for, uh, Ms. Nancy, she has her, a grandbaby here tonight, and I know she's just so excited, Lord. And, and we thank you for just your healing hand, Lord, that, that, that you, that you touched, that you touched him, and, and now he's just a growing baby. And so for that, Lord, we say, thank you. Uh, Lord, we ask if you would to guide us and lead us as we travel through this day. In your son, Jesus' name, we pray, amen. We're gonna ask, um, we're gonna ask our county manager tonight if he would lead us in, uh, the pledge.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, agenda, please. It's been motioned by, uh, Commissioner Schultz and seconded by Commissioner, um, Edwards. All in favor? The pass is five to zero, thank you. Uh, next, we have, uh, citizens' comments. This opportunity that will allow citizens to come up and make comments on agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please come now and state your name and your address for the record, please. Citizens' comments. Thank you. Next is old business. We have none. Um, then we have the chairman's report. Uh, first, I wanna thank, um, Commissioner Edwards, uh, for, as the, uh, assistant chairman for running the board meeting, um, uh, at our last board meeting, sir. I greatly appreciate it. Um, I had an opportunity to go back and watch it on the, uh, on the site, and he did an excellent job. Excellent job. Uh, there's somebody out there that's talking about a fence somewhere, so, uh, yep, did excellent job. Uh, so I say, thank, thank you for that. Next, I wanna, uh, recognize Commissioner Cowan. Commissioner Cowan is now a certified county commissioner. He has received his certification, and I have his, I have his plaque right here, and I wanna come up and, uh, present it to him. Congratulations. Who give my opportunity? Commissioner Cowan, would you like, Commissioner Cowan, would you like to say a few words?
No.
Wow. It's a lot of hours not to say nothing. Uh, but, yeah, it's a lot of hours. Well, listen, thank you for your dedication and determination to, to get that done. Um, he followed me around in every class, man. I was like, man. Um, next, last, but definitely not least, um, I just wanna thank this community, uh, for the job that they did with, uh, uh, Mr. Alman Turner, chief, um, is what everybody call it. They did such an amazing job, um, from our sheriff department, from the police, city government, police department, uh, from just Springfield Church, just the Newton County community. They did an excellent job. So, uh, I just wanna make sure I say that, say thank you. Uh, and we will, we'll be issuing a statement, uh, real soon to the, to the paper. Uh, but this community has went above and beyond, uh, to make sure that family, that family was comforted. So I do say, thank you, guys, for that. Um, next, um, it's county manager report.
Mr. Kerr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to bring a few things to your attention. Um, you do have the report in front of you, but I wanna touch base on a couple of things, uh, starting with the animal control, um, uh, shelter. Um, we've had seventy-five animals that were transferred to sixteen different, uh, rescue groups over the past month. We continue, um, to, uh, do a great job of trying to keep, um, the, getting animals adopted. Um, we've done some much-needed repairs over in the existing judicial center. Um, we did get new bulletproof windows installed for, uh, Judge, uh, Johnson and Judge Ott. And then we've also have removed the wallpaper from the stairwells and have painted those walls. They were getting into some bad shape. We do have some other improvements planned, but that's what we've got, we've done at this point. Um, the University of Georgia has conducted their, uh, interviews for the next extension agent and have, um, myself and, um, Amanda Schumaker, uh, will be a part of another round of interviews. And then, once they make a final, uh, selection, they will recommend that person to the board, and there'll be an opportunity for the community to have a meet and greet with the proposed agent. And assuming all goes well, then, uh, they would finalize their decision. Hopefully, he'll be on board, he or she will be on board in the first part of, uh, this coming year. Um, Development Services had a working luncheon with the EPD, particularly on stormwater. Uh, went very well and were able to, uh, uh, to build a, a, a relationship with them. Um, the Elections Department met with Secretary of State, uh, Raffensperger. Um, as you all will recall, uh, Secretary did come and visit us at our retreat. He also stopped by the Elections Office to talk with the people over there about the new voting machines and some of the requirements that were going to be, uh, coming down the, uh, pike and also to help them get a little more comfortable with what was happening. Um, the Fire Department has started the remodeling and updating of, uh, the fire station in, uh, Rocky Plains. We're getting the septic tank permit at this point. And, uh, so, um, that project will be in full swing, uh, very, very shortly. Um, we've had quite a great response, uh, for our posting for new firefighters. We've had over a hundred responses, and, um, we have been able to call about thirty good applications out of that so far. Also, the, uh, outreach of folks in the Fire Department, um, uh, they've been busy, uh, doing, visiting, uh, different places in the county. Uh, they've made a turkey fryer, um, uh, tur- fried turkey safety PSA that you may have seen on, uh, on the website. Um, also, they've been very active in getting out smoke alarms to the community at Riverside Mobile Home Park. Uh, seventy-two smoke alarms there. Um, a hundred and eleven smoke alarms were, uh, installed. Eighty-five of the, um, citizens that we protected and were educated on fire safety at home, plus all of the visitation and things that they're doing with the schoolchildren. Um, and, uh, we just talked with the chief tonight about, uh, purchasing additional, uh, fire detective units to be given away free to the people in the county who, um, need that. Uh, also, I just wanna let everybody know that there will be a, uh, give the Burns the Boot a drive on December twelfth, thirteen, and fourteen. And, uh, also, uh, the Christmas trees will be producing a Christmas tree fire safety PSA to go along with your fried turkey. Um, we are in the process of interviewing, um, for the vacant GIS analyst position, and, uh, hopefully, they will be starting with us in, uh, December, in, towards the end of December. Um, GIS has been very active with, uh, Ms. Bertram and the, in the census count, uh, full census count committee. Um, make sure that we're, uh, getting everyone accounted that we need to. Also, one of their projects currently is working with the fire chief on identifying possible sites for a fire station to be located where, uh, our volunteer station, or somewhere in the area where volunteer station four was located. And so, um, that would be the beginning of a process there to get another, uh, station in that area. We've also, um, I wanted to advise you all that I made a selection on the Director of Finance. Um, Brittany White did agree to take the position, and we're very happy with that. And so, we wanna congratulate her. She had a, she's had a great teacher, and, uh, so she's already jumped in there and is making, um, making it her home now. So we're very proud of that. Um, we had, uh, Indeed is one of our, um, recruiting, uh, the places that we recruit from, and we've been able to get over five hundred resumes from Indeed, Indeed, for various positions throughout, throughout the county. Um, this black, past month was Diabetes Awareness Month. We had two luncheon learns. The, we also have a cardiovascular screening that was planned for March. Um, if you go, happen to have been gone, uh, gone into the administration building, you'll see an Attitude is Gratitude tree, and this was something that everyone put the things that they were thankful for at this time of year. And also, there's a donation box for Women's Shelter for food and clothing and for other things there. Hopefully, um, uh, not only employees, but members of the public will take advantage of that. Um, HR also has, has distributed and, um, received responses back from employee benefits survey to help us make better, uh, most informed decisions we can when it comes time for our insurance renewals. Um, information, uh, the, uh, IS Department Information Services. Currently, if you look at, you have a, a, uh, county email, you'll see a little fish hook in the top right-hand corner. Uh, that is a fish alert warning button. Um, essentially, what this does is if you get a suspect email and you think it is a phishing scam, then you can tag that email, and then that will automatically go to the IT department in order to block, uh, that mail from coming again, from going to anybody else's mail. They'll review it and, and see whether or not it's, uh, poses a harm. The Juvenile Court Services has, uh, has conducted, uh, several, um, training. Uh, Judge Carter has hosted a Georgia State University class. Um, they held a hundred and fifty-two hearings during, during the month of October and had, uh, also held a Thanksgiving celebration for those members of the Family Treatment Court, as well as the Behavioral Treatment Court. Um, let's see, I think I've got a couple of other things. Uh, Public Works has completed clearing the section of the trail, uh, that we will be paving. Um, and hopefully, within the next couple of months, we'll have an opportunity to be able to pave. They also installed three cross drains in Jamestown, which was one of the things that we had pledged to do in support of that community. Um, many of you now have seen the Flat Shores, uh, bypass intersection. The lights are up and working, and we'd like to try to schedule a ribbon cutting for sometime in the next couple of weeks. Uh, they have to finish some little bit of shoulder work, and then it'll be complete. We've also sent out an RFP for fleet management to see about leasing our vehicle fleet, with the exception of the, uh, large trucks. Um, well, Senior Center, Senior Services, uh, had a Thanksgiving lunch for about a hundred and sixty folks. This was done in conjunction with, um, St. Paul, uh, AME Church. Also, um, those of you who may know, uh, seniors in the community, we're gonna have some vendors that come in, uh, to Turner Lake and allow seniors who can't otherwise get out to have, to be able to shop and to purchase things from, uh, some vendors or from city, from around Covington and Newton County. Uh, and lastly, I would like to say, our Christmas luncheon for our employees will be next Thursday, the twelfth, from eleven to one-thirty at Turner Lake. I know the employees really appreciate it. Um, appreciate to see y'all, and y'all always show up in great numbers and greet and, and everybody. So, um, we'll have it at Turner Lake from eleven to one-thirty, and I hope to see everybody there. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Kerr, so on the county extension agent, um, and until the last month, I had no idea that we, we, we drew from the knowledge of our extension agent until I talked to some of the farmers in District One in the last, especially in the last month. So the, so UGA gives us a pool, two candidates, three candidates?
Um, what they have done is narrowed it down to, um, to two candidates at this point. They have invited, um, myself and Amanda, um, Schumaker, as well as one of the members of the farm community to interview, uh, to, uh, another round of interviews with the two final candidates. From that, um, then they, uh, out of that interview, this final interview, then the, the final candidate will be identified.
By yourself, Ms. Schumaker, and UGA?
Yes, that's correct. And then, um, they will have a meet and greet for the entire community, anybody that wants to come in and talk and discuss. And, um, what they told me was is that, um, provided and assuming that there was not any, um, concern about the candidate, then they would present that i- individual to the board, uh, for, to be brought in.
So the meet and greet will be part of the, the final selection of a candidate, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, well, that's, that's correct. All right, and my second thing was, so the, the leasing of fleet vehicles, what, what's, what's the impetus behind that? I'm, I'm sure it has to be money, but what, where, where was this, where did that come?
We actually started looking at this about a year and a half ago. Um, and because of the, the cost, the, the amount of money that it does cost to maintain the fleet, um, we do have, we are, through a, a leasing program, we would be able to lease, um, the bulk of the vehicles, uh, that we use outside of things like dump trucks and tractor trailers and, uh, the, the big heavy equipment. It would save us, uh, some money, and it would also, uh, over the course of, of about four years, then it would reduce the average age of our fleet from, I think we're at, uh, somewhere between fifteen and seventeen years, uh, down to four years. So, um, it's an opportunity for us to have a more, uh, to have a, uh, a, a newer fleet that would cost less money to maintain. Um, and also, we're not having to put all of the money out upfront. We would lease these vehicles. Um, and then, at the appointed time, then they would be turned in, uh, to be sold, um, by the, whatever leasing company that would go with. There, uh, now, um, we would have a provision in the contract that we would do with them for two things. One is, we would wanna make sure that they would provide, that they would use local dealers to provide the vehicles. And then, two, that if there is a preference for a particular, uh, service, uh, provider, that they would also honor, um, and allow us to use that service provider for, for repairs and things. Um, so we're, we're gonna get all those, we're gonna get those proposals in just to see, um, where we are and to see what we can save and to see how, how much we would be able to, um, modernize the fleet that we've got.
All right, thank you. I would, I would strongly encourage, and it sounds like you are, that we, we get input in the process, um, during the process, from the major dealers here in town. I think, uh, uh, one, one, one gentleman owns two of the, you know, the Chevy and the Chrysler dealership, and we have another gentleman that owns the Ford dealership. So, um, and both of those people, um, plow back into this community of lives.
Sure.
Uh, I would hate to see us, um, abandon them to, for lack of a better word. Uh, it doesn't sound like we are, even what, no matter what we do. But I would just encourage you to improve things through the moment in this process.
Sure.
If we could.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lloyd, I just wanna say, I, I don't like to talk about myself, but I do like talking about other folks as far as you've done here. You've done a great job bringing out the strategic plan action items and incorporating this in your notes. I mean, I, I think this is exactly the way strategic planning is supposed to work, and I think you've done a great job with it.
Well, thank you. I have to pass that off, that, uh, uh, those logs to the department heads who have, who have really embraced the plan, and they're the ones who go through when they do this and make sure that they're, that they're able to show that they are supporting that plan. But thank you, I'll pass that on.
Uh, Commissioner Schultz.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Floyd. Today, um, Martin and I both received an email from ACCG from a listserv, and, um, we were supposed to respond so that they knew that, but it was, it was from the board of managers with listserv. And apparently, we are not able to use that because of the, the security on our, um, email server. So I don't know if, if there's something that we can do to be able to participate or if we have to give them a separate, I hate giving a separate email address because it is counted. You know, it makes it better if there's any kind of need for any open records requests, if we have it all consolidated on the account.
Um, I'll talk with the IT folks. I, I'm also on a listserv from ACCG, and I've never had a problem receiving information. So it could be some of the settings, but anyway, I'll try to find out for you.
Well, it, it, mine came back, after I responded, it came back and said, you, you are not permitted to use this, uh, to send anything from your email address.
Sometimes it, it depends on the number, how it's, how the email is sent. Um, I know that typically, it will block very large batches, um, but there is a threshold. So, um, I'll ask Greg to take a look at it and to see, um, to see what's going on there and find out for you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you. Hey, I did, I forgot a couple of things, um, in my chair, chairman's report. Also, uh, Mr. Kerr, um, he was elected president of the Northeast Georgia Regional, uh, County Management Committee. Uh, so we wanna recognize him for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
That is, that's a big deal. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, maybe I'll be seeing your anthem sometime. Yeah. Go Dawgs. Go Dawgs. Um, also, and I, what? What? Oh, wow. And I, and I forgot about, I just saw the sheriff back there. Also, oh, we had the opportunity to go over, uh, to be a part of the sheriff department, uh, the unveiling of their new, um, their new, new, I don't, what, what, it's a body scanner. I don't got the, the, the correct name. What's the name of the sheriff, sheriff? Detective, what now? Detective eighty-four. I tell you what, uh, many of us know that there are a lot of issues that, 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 that get into jails, not just Newton County jails, but just every jail. And, uh, people bring things inside of the jail and, and in many different ways. I won't say how they get it in, uh, different ways that they get it in, but it's, it's kinda crazy, if you ask me. Uh, but they had, the sheriff office now has a machine, um, that will scan all the, all the people, all the inmates that come through, and whether they have drugs inside of their, in, inside of their mouth, um, in, in their dentures, uh, or their body parts, um, they can find it. And, uh, Commissioner Schultz and, and, uh, Mr. Kerr, uh, we was able to go over there and, and, and witness it. And I was able to get, uh, I was the first one to get scanned. And, uh, uh, but it, it's, it's a, it's a tool that will definitely keep the employees safe and inmates safe. So, uh, kudos to you guys, and kudos for the board, uh, for supporting that. Uh, it's, it's, it's a major deal. Uh, you, you wanna say something, Sheriff? You can, I mean, you gonna play it? Thank you, thank you. Also, we want to welcome tonight, uh, uh, Matt Pepper, the city manager of Oxford. Thank you for being here tonight. He's with, uh, leadership in Newton County, so thank you and you're welcome to be, for be, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, next, guys, it's Nathan Els. We want to move down to, uh, number nine, um, which is our finances, uh, Ms. Brittany.
Good evening. Tonight, um, I will be presenting the October two thousand nineteen financial report. So, right now, this is October, so this is the fourth month of our fiscal year, so we should roughly be looking to be around thirty-three percent of our actual to budget numbers. So, we are currently year-to-date at seventeen million, seventeen point nine million for our revenues for the year, um, which is at twenty-six percent, which is pretty normal because as you can see in the bar graph below, in October and November, our tax revenues start picking up. So, we're, we will have more revenues start streaming in in November and December as the next tax payment date. And this is just another bar graph to show the actuals versus the budgeted revenue for the year. And our general fund expenditures for the year, we're at twenty point four million dollars, and that puts us at right around twenty-nine point six percent, which is pretty in target to be at our thirty-three percent range that we're aiming for right now. And then below is just a bar graph that depicts that number as well. And here's a bar graph that shows where we are for year-to-date actual versus year-to-date budget for the expenditures. And here is each department's, um, percentage use for the year, and every department seems to be on track or a little bit below, and anyone that's below just may, um, be in the works of possibly hiring new personnel or bigger equipment, things like that, RFPs, biz, that needs to go out. And right now, we are at revenues are under our expenditures for the year at two point five million, which is to be expected this time of year as our tax revenue has not completely, um, come in yet for the year. And our general fund balance is still un-audited. Our audit should be done, um, by the end of December, so we're working on wrapping that up now. So, this will be a more finalized number probably in my next report, but right now, we're looking at, um, fund balance at the end of two thousand nineteen to be roughly about nineteen million. Our enterprise funds for the year, um, as you can see, the water fund and solid waste fund, our solid waste is a little above the thirty-three percent due to most hangtag, um, income comes in towards the beginning of the year. Um, water funds right on track with thirty-eight percent, and Gaithers, as I mentioned last month, is at eighty-six percent due to more movie revenue than they anticipated for the year. Two thousand five SPOSS, we have wrapped up all those projects. We're just finishing off some debt payment for the oh-six, um, admin debt, and we should be paying on that for the next probably, I think it's a year, year and a half. We have two or three more payments left on that, and once that's over, then we can finally wrap up the two thousand five SPOSS. Um, two thousand eleven SPOSS, the highlighted projects are the ones that we're still in works on, so Rhodes still have some projects left to finish, the historic jail, we still have, um, that project to finish, and as Lloyd mentioned earlier, Fire Station Eight's about to get geared up, um, to get really working on that, and they will also be utilizing the fire services equipment to furnish Fire Station Eight. In two thousand seventeen SPOSS, our bonded projects are beginning to take place, the seniors expansion, the nine-one-one communication, animal control expansion, um, and then the parks as well. So, all the parks and the additions that you're seeing on going on around are SPOSS projects that are bonded. And right now, our collections for SPOSS are exceeding, um, are projected by four point four million, so I'm estimating that we should be fully collected in our SPOSS about a year early, so we should have about a year's worth, um, of excess collections toward the end of SPOSS. And this year to date, we have collected one point three million in our impact fund. And that wraps up. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Any question, guys? Um, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you for that. Uh, so, our current SPOSS is about four million ahead of, I guess you'd call it.
Yeah, projected.
And that's for four, three months, four months?
No, since we started collecting at the beginning of two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one thing. You said nineteen million in fund balance. What's the, uh, the recommended amount for the ACCG?
Um, our current policy, let me go back to the location. I recommend roughly around five months' worth of expenditures and fund balance, so we are not there yet. But our current policy states fifteen to twenty-two percent of that, which we are over that.
Great. Anything else?
But like I said, that is un-audited, so it could change.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Cowan, I didn't see.
That's all right. Uh, you still comfortable with the audit in term?
Yes.
You're still good with him?
We are in contract with them for five years, and we, this is our third year with them, so we do have to, we do, we are very happy with them.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Uh, guys, next we have our, uh, item number ten, consent agenda. I seek a, a motion of approval, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner, um, Edwards and second by Commissioner, uh, Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Pass is five to zero, thank you. Uh, next we have, uh, senior service, it's requesting permission to accept a contract amendment from Northeast Georgia Regional, uh, Commissioner. Mr. Kerr, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission, uh, has, is granting us an additional seventeen thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars. This money will be used to continue the, um, food programs, the Meals on Wheels and the other food programs, um, uh, that we, um, provide for the seniors. Um, we have increased the numbers of clients that we serve significantly, and so, um, this will help us to continue being able to feed them, uh, at this rate. So, there is no match, um, for, uh, the county, and, uh, this was not a budgeted item, however, um, we will be using and really need the additional funding.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Henderson, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. C. Um, just see, I make a motion to approve as stated by the county manager.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner, uh, Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? Pass is five to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is, um, item number twelve, VOC Resolution, um, R one-two-zero-three-one-nine, consideration of a resolution to convey zero point one seven acres of excess right-ofway. Um, Ms. Martin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In September, we had a group of attorneys contact us, um, they are representing Georgia Highway Twenty LLC regarding a settlement agreement that was reached in two thousand eleven, which concluded a condemnation matter that was filed by the county against the LLC in two thousand eight. Um, the resulting consent judgment filed by the court, the settlement agreement and other documents have been provided to you all. I do apologize that you're, um, you didn't have much time to go through the memo that we provided, so I am going to do some reading for you just to ensure you have a complete understanding. Um, we believe that, um, we need to get a quick claim D filed quickly, since this was, um, a matter that was settled eleven years ago. So, um, we would ask that the board approve this matter. We brought it back just out of caution, so you'd be aware of it, though the settlement agreement has already been agreed upon and is spread upon the minutes.
Thank you. Um, I seek a motion, please. Ms. Cowan.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve, um, Resolution R one-two-zero-three-one-nine to convey zero point one seven nine acres of excess right-ofway at the northwest corner of intersection of Georgia Highway Twenty and Highway Two-Foyle, back to the, uh, to bloody property on Georgia Highway Twenty LLC.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Um, any discussion? All in favor? The pass is five to zero, thank you. Uh, next is human resources risk, risk management discussion, consideration of twenty-twenty workers compensation policy renewal. Uh, Mr. Kerr, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask that, um, Amanda Shoemaker and Pap, and Pamela Maxwell, who's our risk manager, uh, come up. We've got some good news for you tonight and, uh, I'd like for them to share that with you.
Hey, good evening. Um, the Chris, the request you have before you is to approve the premium renewal of our ACCG workers compensation insurance policy. The workers' compensation premium is based on several factors, which include the payroll of our organization, uh, class codes, and an experience modifier. We received a safety discount this year, um, in the amount of seven percent, and we, um, also met all the safety requirements, and we received a, um, discount for a scheduled modifier and for a volume discount. But we are pleased to announce that this year's premium was decreased by over twenty thousand dollars, which is the first time in a very long time.
Yeah, yes, it is.
Yes. And, uh, we're very proud of that, and we want to thank all the county departments that have worked with risk management to help us improve, um, our claims management, our return-to-work program, as well as our overall safety culture. I am going to mention a couple of things that we have done, um, over the past year to try to reduce our overall cost with our workers' compensation program. Uh, we have improved our claims management by getting our claims reported faster and a little bit more accurate. We have improved, improved our claims investigations. We are collaborating with doctors to get employees back to work faster. We have added urgent care to our physicians panel to eliminate the need for some of our ER visits. We have improved our return-to-work programs with the collaboration of our county departments so that we can get, um, our employees back into transitional duties, light duty, so that they can get back to work as they heal. We have also included a safety presentation, um, as part of our new hire orientation, so that we can make sure that all new hires understand, um, what our safety culture is and that they are, um, a part of that from day one. We have implemented defensive driving training twice a year, CPR training and other types of training. Uh, we have also applied for and received a safety grant from ACCG this year, in which we have purchased tables, chairs, and some computers, because we are going to have a safety learning lab that our employees will have access to, so that, um, they can do some online training for safety and other HR, uh, types of training. We have a safety committee that meets four times per year, and that safety is performing site inspections to make sure that we are creating a safe work environment for all of our employees. We also hope this year to have some safety booths at our twenty-twenty Wellness Fair to promote our safety program as health and safety go hand in hand. So, with that being said, um, we would like for you all to approve our annual premium for twenty-twenty policy in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-five. This item was budgeted for in our twenty-nineteen fiscal year, and the amount falls within our budgetary, uh, projection. So, that's all I have. If somebody wants to add something else, don't.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please. Ms. Cowan.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, ACCG workers' compensation, um, fund, uh, premium for one hundred ninety-nine thousand six fifty-seven.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Mason. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Pass is five to zero. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it and your funding for our safety program.
Thank you much. Thank you for being here tonight. Y'all, we downed our last one, y'all want to take a, y'all want to take a break or y'all want to keep on? Uh, next is item number fourteen, uh, animal control discussion, consideration to approve the amendment, amendment, uh, number two for the sunbill contract. Um, Mr. Kerr, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this amendment is the second amendment to our contract for the completion of the, uh, expansion to the senior services building as well as the animal control facility. Um, the first amendment, uh, as you will recall, established a, um, maximum, uh, contract price for the construction of the expansion to the senior services building, um, and this second amendment establishes that, um, that amount, uh, that same maximum or not to exceed, uh, amount for construction of the animal control shelter. That amount, um, I'm sorry, I've lost my page there for a second, so I need to go find the, that amount, the guaranteed maximum price is one million three hundred ninety-four thousand forty-four dollars. Um, and that was for a total contract, uh, for the senior services and the animal, uh, control shelter, um, was of three million one hundred two thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars. So, we would just ask that the board approve this second amendment so that then we can go ahead, move ahead with beginning construction.
Uh, I seek a motion, please. Okay, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve Amendment Number Two for the sunbill contract agreement for construction manager design bill to construct the new improvements expanding the existing animal control center.
Uh, it was motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? The pass is five to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item number fifteen, um, alcohol license, final reading, uh, Corner Grocery, one-three-one-three, Highway Eleven, North Social Circle, Georgia, um, ala night, night uh, District Five.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve final reading for Corner Grocery, address one-three-one-three, Highway Eleven, North Social Circle, Georgia, District Five, Ali G, final of honor.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Schultz. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Pass five to zero. Thank you. Uh, first reading, CBS Pharmacy, five-three-eight-four, Highway Twenty South, uh, Covetton, Georgia, Courtney Evans, District Two, first reading. First reading, uh, Circle Cave, four-one-seven-five Salem Road, um, Covetton, Georgia, Amanda Clay, District Two. First reading, Walgreens, one-two-six-two-one, store number, um, one-two-nine-five-five Brown Bridge Road, Covetton, Georgia, Patritton Eaton, Eaton, Patrina Eaton, Ederton, District Two as well. Next is, um, item number- Next is item number sixteen, citizens' comments. This opportunity we allow citizens to make. Item number sixteen is a... So I guess they don't have any violations? No, is that correct? Okay, so I seek a motion that we approve CBS, Circle K, and Walgreens. So I seek a motion that we approve the alcohol license renewals, which would be fifteen eight. It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Next is item number sixteen, citizens' comments. This opportunity we allow citizens to come up and make comments about any topic. You may come at this time, please state your name and your address. For the record, please, you have three minutes to do so. Last board meeting. Right. All right. Next is Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll be brief. I've got a couple of things I want to say. First of all, I want to apologize to this board. I have, since my new career started, I have, they were actually required that I be at work today, so I have to, I have to be at work, and so I've missed a couple of functions with the commissioners. I hope to, that change is slapped here in the near future. Additionally, Mr. Harold Ayers, a former commissioner of this board, passed away this past week. He leaves behind his wife Diane, his daughter Linda, son Daryl, and daughter Allison, and most of the grandkids. He's a friend of mine, and he, the community will surely miss him. Last thing I have is, I was able to attend Chief Turner's candlelight vigil on the square Friday night. Municipal court required that I be in Athens yesterday for traffic violation, but I could not attend the funeral yesterday. But I, I want to say one other thing. Chief mentored me on the school board. He made fun of me during golf tournaments relentlessly. He's probably making fun of my off-the-rack suit right now. He always did, so, but, but he epitomizes to me what a gaping hole in his community is in real life for this community. I just don't know how you, I don't know how you ever feel that he, he meant that much to this community. And I'm, I'm not saying anything that the town will hate, obviously, but he was just a, a man that I've never, ever, ever heard a single negative thing come out of his mouth. He was a friend of mine, and I will sorely miss him.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have too much to say. I do want to say that we are excited about the splash pad taking place or that's being put together in District Two. It is coming along very, very well. They do have the equipment up now, and so we're looking at getting the fencing done, as well as the getting the building that's going to be there to allow people to come in and out, so we're working on that. So that, that's definitely moving forward swiftly, and we're excited about opening it up in two thousand and twenty for the entire county to be able to come and enjoy our first splash pad in our county. I also want to echo what Commissioner Edwards said about Chief Turner. I did get an opportunity to attend the vigil on Friday night, and it was phenomenal. And just to see the support, and I didn't really get an opportunity to know Chief Turner for a very long time, but I'll never forget the very first time that I met him last year at Springfield Baptist Church when I was campaigning and running for this current seat, and everybody said, "You gotta talk to Chief Turner. You gotta meet him. You gotta meet him." And so when I met him for the very first time, he, of course, greeted me with a smile and a firm handshake, and he said, "I don't know why everybody told you to, you know, come to me. I'm nobody. You know, I'm just, you know, little old Mr. Turner." And so I, you know, once again, he was just that type of person, and I never knew that on November ninth of this year, at a political party event that we had at the headquarters for a party, that that would be the last time that I would see him shake his hand and see that smile for the very last time. Got an opportunity to meet Mr. Anita for the very first time, and I thanked her. I said, "Miss Anita, it's a blessing to meet you for the very first time. I want you to know that you have an amazing husband, and he's very encouraging every single time I meet him. He always has a smile and a firm handshake, and I'm, I don't know, you guys will know, I'm all about handshakes when it comes to men. That means a lot to me. I can tell who you are based off of your handshake." And I always knew that there was something special about him, and when I told her that, she looked at me, and she said, "Thank you so much. I appreciate, you know, you giving me those kind words about my husband," and I can see how much she cared about him and loved him, and so like Commissioner Edwards said, that's a huge hole in our community, and it would definitely be hard to really replace someone like him, which I don't think we ever will, but we want to continue to keep the Turner family in our prayers and our community in our prayers as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank you for your kind words and the prayer. That was very thoughtful, and thank you very much. So when we were here for our last board meeting, the next day, I had the opportunity to go to Tulsa to attend a peer exchange on mental illness and relation to our court system. And I want to thank the sheriff for including me in a task force that we have here in Newton County related to individuals that have mental illness that we are trying to work with in our courts. Meeting was an exceptional experience for me, because I got to interface with people throughout the country who are dealing with the same kinds of issues that we deal with here in Newton County. I will say that I was really proud of Newton County, because we are already doing a lot of, we're already taking a lot of positive steps with our Sheriff's Department, our law enforcement, our Community Service Board, Viewpoint Health, our accountability courts. For our, for our community, our size, we're ahead of the curve, and yet we still have a problem that we need to address and we need to continue to address. One of the most memorable experiences I had in Tulsa was to see two apartment buildings that have been turned into housing for individuals that are homeless and also individuals that have mental illness, and it's really remarkable how if we deal with the housing issue first, then we can we can impact those individuals to where they don't necessarily end up in our court system. So I look forward to working further on that peer exchange. We're going to have, we'll have more peer exchanges throughout the year, and I look forward to sharing those experiences with you as a board. I was out of town last Friday night for the vigil, and I really missed it, but I was able to watch excerpts on Facebook Live, and I appreciate the fact that we have Facebook Live, so I could feel like I was a part of that. The funeral yesterday was inspirational. It was uplifting, and I think it was exactly exemplified Almond Turner for us. He was one that, that always inspired others, and he left a great impact on all of us, and that funeral yesterday, you know, we, I, I know I left with a, with a real spirit of his presence and, and how to live full, live his legacy in our community, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Can I say real quick, I'm from Tulsa, Oklahoma, so it's amazing that she went to my hometown, Commissioner Schultz went to my hometown. Well, that's common. That's common.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Seagull. You know, since we've been talking about Mr. Turner, when I first heard it, I didn't want to believe it. I thought it was maybe a mistake, and maybe he had said it, and finally just kind of sunk in, Jimmy. But the thing that, that I've always remembered, at least the way that I was raised, that if you, if you're anchored in Jesus, I mean, when that time comes, you be with Jesus, and so I believe that's where he's at, with Jesus. And I had the opportunity over the years, we was elected around about the same time, same amount of years with the same people, and they loved him. In some election, I thought a little bit more than he loved me, because he got more votes than I did, you know, it was good. But make a long story short, the last time that I really seen him and talked to him was I was running, and I knocked on his door to give him a call, or to put the card in his door, and he opened the door. And he said, "What you out here running for, J.C.??" He said, "You're going to win this election." I said, "Mr. Turner, this is what I do." And then the last time I shook his hand was at the groundbreaking of Commissioner Schultz's district, at the precinct, and, you know, we just never know when, when that time will come, but I thank God for knowing him and the fact that I know his family, and they're all good peoples, and let us not forget about them after the funeral. You know, when, when the funeral take place, there are a lot of peoples there, from everywhere, but after the funeral, a few days, sometime you will find them back there. So let us continue with his family, though. Thank you, Mr. Seagull.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I know this is the last board meeting for this year, and it's three years we've been on here, and it's been a journey. But I want to say to everybody, I appreciate everybody's efforts in working with me and working with each other. I think we've, we've accomplished a lot, and we've done it without tearing each other apart and without tearing the community apart. I just want to say thank you for being willing to step up and work as government is supposed to work and not focus on parties and positions and things like that. I think it's been real, real important. It is for me. And as for Almond Turner, I know a lot of folks talk about him in the community, but for me, Almond was my friend, and only forty years since then, bro, hard. Because he was there when a lot of folks weren't for me at the time, and I know Sheriff Brown knows as much as I do, and I know he's a bad sign. Forty years is a long time to know somebody. And I know Almond did so much in the community, and everybody loved him, you know, for me, he was, he was one of my best friends. And I just, I just have to remember him that way. I hope everybody else that knew him like that will remember him like that.
Thank you, sir. It's been a last meeting in two thousand and nineteen. It's been another, I think, great year for our board, not only our board, our, our community. I think this board has made some major steps. I think our county manager has had a big, big, big influence in that with helping with his strategic plan. So I say thank you for the work that you have done. Commissioner Schultz and Commissioner Cowan were two of the commissioners that was chosen to be a part of the meetings, and so guys, I say thank you for that as well. But it took this whole board as a group, as a unit, to make it happen, so I think we have a great board. I am super duper proud of you guys, and proud to be the chairman of this great community. So with that, I say thank you, guys. I too long stayed a great friend. I had the honor and the privilege to be with him Friday night before it happened. I had a chance to hear him joke, hear him talk about me not taking my wife out to breakfast. That's something that he did every Sunday at church. He criticized me for not taking my wife out to breakfast, and and so I finally took her out for breakfast last Sunday. We had, we had breakfast because of him. But, you know, what do you say when, what do you do when you lose a giant in a community such as Almond Turner? I don't know yet, but I plan to try to find out what we can do as a board, as a community, to honor him appropriately. I don't know if you name a building. I don't know if you name a road. I, I don't know what you do, but I want this board to be thinking about doing something as a group, because he, he, he is well deserved. He has earned it. He has put so much in his community. When you talk about one Newton, you talk about Almond Turner. You don't get one Newton without Almond Turner. I done cried, and I done cried, and I done cried, you know? Then I done cried some more. But it got to come a point in time where you do something, so I'm going to sue petition this board that we do something to honor him. Because he is, and he was, a great man, a great man, a great leader in this community. With that, I want to tell everybody out there, we probably won't see y'all until next year. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and we look, we look forward to seeing you guys in two thousand and twenty. We do have a need for executive session tonight, land, land disposing. If there's nothing else, I seek a motion that we go into executive session. I don't know if we did what, but it was so fast. It's a move. Okay, it was a motion by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Henderson. All in favor?